Welcome, everybody, to the Wednesday, May 10th Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. I'll start with a call to order and roll call on the lap.
Frank Mill.
June Gagny.
John Larr.
Hartley Stardust.
Lindsey Jocelyn.
Brian Bray.
Katie Lee.
All right, there is a quorum and there are no alternates to a point as all members are present. Starting with public hearing, item A 23-6 SP Douglas Brisby, applicant, Zane LLC owner, special permit requested for town Plainfield Dog Track Pump Station replacement at 55 Laker Road, assessors map 18, block 13, lot 2, located in an I-1 industrial zone district. And we have speaking.
What the best orientation of these boards is. So, good evening, my name is Dr. Brisby, I'm the assistant O'Neill, you've been assisting the town WPCA as well as Stephanie, the superintendent of the treatment plants with various wastewater-related projects throughout the town, both at the mainly the north plant as well as the collection system. The project I am presenting on today is the Dog Track Pump Station. As alluded to, this is located at 55 Laker Road, it's right in front of the existing quality inn off exit, I believe it's 28 when you're heading 395 north. The existing pump station is what we refer to as a tube-style pump station, so it's got really two separate components. One is the wet well where the wastewater actually accumulates, and then the existing, where the house are pumped, where the house, where outside, where the pumps are housed, are in a cylindrical structure that penetrates below grade. In late 2021, we did an evaluation of the existing pump station, we performed a confined space entry to observe really the interior of the existing pump station. In the lower half where the valves as well as the pumps are housed, we noticed widespread corrosion, and we had our structural engineer take a look at it, and he noted some section loss actually in the steel of the cylindrical structure down below grade. So obviously this presented a significant safety concern for anybody that needs to go to maintain the pumps, operate the valves that are down there. So as a result of that, what we are proposing is to provide a new pump station adjacent to the existing one while still being within the existing sewer easement that's available to us. The new pump station will be a submersible-style pump station that's illustrated here, so there will be a submersible area where the pumps will be housed. There will be rails that extend up to the surface where there will be an access hatch, so in the event that the new pumps ever need to be maintained, you're no longer needing to do a confined space entry, you need to go down the existing, you know, cylindrical tube-style pump station to maintain those. So there's a safety benefit associated with that. The pumps themselves will discharge in the vertical position and then through what we consider a valve vault which will be integral to the pump station itself. So this is kind of what you're looking at here, it's a section of the station itself and then a plane view of the two access hatches on the wet well side and then the bailing through the valve vault. Looking at kind of the site plan, so that structure again is located right here, will be intercepting the existing gravity flow by putting a new doghouse manhole and directing the flow to the pump station. The pump station site will be accompanied by three enclosures, two of which are electrical enclosures, and another one will serve as power and controls for the pumps themselves. So those are illustrated right here as kind of three smaller rectangles on the site if you will. And then on the backside, we will be providing a new backup generator as part of the project to obviously supply backup power in the event that it's ever failed with the line power. That's an added benefit as part of this project, the current pump station does not have a backup generator. And then flow again will be discharged to the pump station to the right before connecting into the existing force main that extends across Laker Road and connects to the existing gravity manhole. And the site itself will be, you know, contained by a chain link fence with swing access gates on either way for, you know, the operators to maintain it moving forward. The project is within the underfoot regulated area off the wetland delineation, we have already gone through wetlands and submitted this project and sought approval. High-level overview.
This is a public hearing, so if there's anybody in the audience with a comment or question on this application, this is your opportunity. Commission members, if you have comments or questions about the application?
This is from the same spot where the ones before.
We are moving it basically further away from the road, just adjacent to it, to keep the existing one online well constructions, but to facilitate it on the viewpoint. But we're still within the existing easement area that's ranked previously by the survey.
I know some sidewalk because they're supposed to come through there, so I didn't know it was that side of the road or the other side. Eventually.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any pending sidewalk projects, but it would be further from than what the existing one currently is.
Are you going to demolish the old one once it becomes out of line?
Yes, that's a great question. Yes, we would demolish the existing one. What we are proposing to do is the wet well that's currently there would be basically filled with floatable fill so that there's obviously no voids below grade. Similar with the cylindrical structure, there's probably like two or three feet that currently extend above grade, we'll cut that down 10 feet below grade and build the remaining section with floatable fill as well.
Any other comments or questions from audience members? Any other comments or questions from board members or staff? Okay, so hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So.
Motion by John.
Second.
Second by Frank. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Public hearing is closed. Moving on to item B 23-4 TA Amendment to Section 5 Flood Plane Management of the Town of Plainfield zoning regulations in association with Plainfield receiving new effective flood maps on September 7, 2023. So this is a town application. Connecticut DEEP revised the flood plane mapping in text which becomes effective on September 7. So the modification of regulations is in order to conform with those changes. Anything you want to add about?
No, not really. There are two main points to take away from this, the changes. The current regulations only require developments larger than five acres to show the 100-year flood line, although our policy has always been to require that line on the site plans regardless of how many acres it is. The new text eliminates that five acre clause and requires all projects to show the 100-year flood limits. Also, the current text requires that all proposed structures in Zone A have the lowest floor, including the basement, above the base flood elevation. The new text adds this requirement to Zones A, E, in addition to Zone A, and requires the lowest floor to be at least one-fourth above the base flood elevation, so they strengthen it a little.
Okay, so this is a public hearing, if anyone has a comment or question on the text amendment, this is your opportunity. Okay, any other comments or questions from board members? Okay, hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the public hearing.
Motion to close.
I have a motion to close by Lindsey, a second by Frank, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Public hearing is closed. Moving on to item C 23-5 TA Amendment to Section 8 Special Flood Hazard Area Floodways of the Town of Plainfield subdivision regulations in association with Plainfield receiving new effective flood maps on September 7, 2023. So once again, Connecticut DEEP has revised the flood plane mapping in text which will become effective September 7, so we are changing the subdivision regulations accordingly. The proposed text is mostly housekeeping but adds two new subsections. 8.4 requires all proposed subdivisions have adequate drainage to reduce exposure to flood hazards, and 8.5 requires that the flood zone be shown on the plan. In addition, if there is no determined base flood elevation for a flood zone, an engineer shall provide a hydrologic and hydraulic analysis to generate a base flood elevation, and both additions are standard practice and will not change our review and approval process. Anything to add on that one, Ryan?
Nope.
Okay, this is a public hearing, if you have a comment or question on this text amendment, now is your opportunity. Any comments or questions from board members? Okay, hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the public hearing.
Motion to close.
Motion to close by John.
Second.
Second by June, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Public hearing is closed. Moving on to the regular meeting, call the meeting to order. Item 2, citizen participation, this is the opportunity for anyone in the public to address the board on an issue that was not a closed public hearing. Okay, hearing and seeing none, moving on to the unfinished old business. Item A 23-2 SPL Ernest Colello Jr. requesting site plan approval for the addition of four contractor storage units on property located at 169 Norwich Road, assessors map 15, block 75, lot 3A, C2 zoning district. Do we have presenting for the applicant?
So, we're still waiting on comments from our town engineer, and I believe the applicant is waiting on DOT approval, so it's my belief that they would like to continue until next one.
So if we don't have what we need, we would continue it regardless? Okay, I did have one question for next month. I know that we had previously approved a site plan, could you bring the previously approved site plan so that we can do a comparison of what you're proposing now?
Do you have that?
Yeah, I have that.
Okay, just have it for the next meeting so that we can review that. All right, so given that we need more information on this application, I will entertain the motion to continue to our next regularly scheduled meeting.
This is the second meeting and I'm missing, is your engineer gonna add it for the next week meeting?
I would hope so.
I mean, two, I mean, three months, I mean, that's a long time. So what do we, what do we do in this case?
Hold on, you just presented the application to us for review, so if there...
No, last month, last month it should have got on there, except that you guys act this time.
So we're waiting for the town engineer, but you're also waiting on DOT.
So the application's not complete at this point?
Why do we have to wait for DOT, why can't we, you know?
Because it impacts the traffic flow?
Yeah, I understand.
Okay, so...
You can also approve it and say continued upon that like the last time.
Mr. Colello?
Yeah?
This is not our first time, right?
Yeah.
So on your application, traffic flow is one of the things that you'll be presenting, so without DOT approval of the egress and ingress, then your traffic flow...
So after the fourth meeting, we'll be, if DOT is done?
If the application is complete, we will move on it. If the application is not complete, we would continue, or we can move to deny and have resubmission, or you can withdraw and resubmit. So there's many options that could happen, but for this evening, there is not enough information to act this evening, so I am asking board members if you would make a motion to continue. Or resolve with staff, that can be done during the normal regular scheduled hours. Okay, thank you.
I'll make a motion to continue next month.
All right, I have a motion by June to continue.
Second.
I have a second by Lindsey, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? So the application's continued to our next regularly scheduled meeting in June. Thank you. Item B 23-4 TA Amendment to Section 5 Flood Plane Management of the Town of Plainfield zoning regulations in association with Plainfield receiving new effective flood maps on September 7, 2023. So this looked to me to be pretty straightforward and in compliance with Connecticut DEEP. Are there any items for discussion? Staff has recommended a effective date of September 7, 2023, so if you are making a motion, if you could also include that effective date?
These should be received on September 7.
That's when the maps are effective, so we want the text to be consistent, yep, we want it to be consistent.
I'll make a motion that we approve the post amendment to Section 5 Flood Plane Management with an effective date of September 7.
Okay, I have a motion by John with the effective date. I have a second by June, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, it is approved with the effective date of September 7. Item C 23-5 TA Amendment to Section 8 Flood Special Flood Hazard Area Floodways of the Town of Plainfield subdivision regulation in association with Plainfield receiving new effective flood maps on September 7, 2023. So same situation, just making the text consistent with the maps, so when making a motion on this, if you could also include that effective date of September 7, 2023?
I guess I'll make an amendment to your motion to approve the amendment to Section 8 Special Flood Hazard Areas Floodways of the Town of Plainfield subdivision regulations with an effective date of September 7.
Okay, motion by John.
Second.
Second by Frank, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? The amendment is approved with the effective date of September 7. Item D 23-6 SP Douglas Brisby, applicant, Zane LLC owner, special permit requested for Town of Plainfield Dog Track Pump Station replacement at 55 Laker Road, assessors map 18, block 13, lot 2, located in an I-1 industrial zone district. So I believe all engineering and all comments, staff comments were addressed. The only recommended condition for the approval is to ensure that the MyLARS are recorded. Any items for deliberation on this one? Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve this, MyLARS.
All right, making sure MyLARS are recorded. So I have a motion by June to approve with that condition. Second by Frank, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Application is approved. Item E 23-3 SPL Keith Pace, requesting site plan approval to construct an 1,800 square foot building addition, 500 square foot coverage storage area, and driveway expansion at 28 Sterling Road, assessors map 30, block 61, lot 18, C2 commercial district.
Good evening, for the record, please pause over there, this is an answer there, if there's any that's said this evening. The property in question is located on the 14th, it used to be the Broggers Oil Site, I don't know if it's better now. Mr. Pace had acquired the property, and he has a contracting business that is running from that, and he would like to expand the building, it's pretty 55, there's this addition in the little, there's like an L in the back, I guess there used to be a piece of the building in there that was, he wants to put a new building in there and then have some car storage to the side that, which would in essence create a larger rectangle overall of the building. It's kind of maintain the existing parking area, it's gonna coat it with some compacted asphalt layers, create a hand-paved parking space in the front, this is required, that will be paid with the concrete, that is required. It's gonna expand the parking area behind the addition, about 35 feet off the building. The site drains away from the road toward the rear of the property in a southern direction. It's a very flat site, I mean, there's all of, I don't know, 14 feet on the front and back of the property, it's pretty flat. But along the, sort of the edge of the proposed parking area, it's gonna be installing a what we call a stormwater quality trench, which is basically a two-foot-eight trench with a stone to catch the runoff as it comes off the parking area. And then as that fills, it's going to outflow into a retention area, wind water, it will sit till it fills to the top of that and then runoff to the rear of the property, and there'll be a storm overflow in the outway area to additionally filter the, eventually runs across the grass area and to a wetland area. Thank to the Wetlands Commission, we've gotten their approval. That's pretty much it, using for again, maybe using the facility for storage, this quick supplies, open office space, things that's for contracting.
Along, so adjacent to residential properties, so are there any fencing or vegetative buffers? What do you have screening?
This is a residential property over here, this is used for residence, some commercial property there, there's standard trees in the area here, this is pretty much lawn, and there's a garage on this property that blocks the view of the site from there, there's a row of pine trees along this boundary line here, to the east side of the property.
So staff just brought in their comments, and the staff have heard that there's currently no screening ordered on the residential sides, so what we must review is Section 8.12, which is buffer screening of commercial districts as it may apply to this application. So item 8.12 Buffer Straining of Commercial Districts, where any lot or part thereof in a commercial district joins a residential district, a landscape buffer strip of at least 25 feet wide shall extend the length of such district boundaries seated to grass and planted to trees and shrubs over six feet in height and capable at all times of the year of satisfactorily obscuring the sight, sound, and illumination of non-residential uses from surrounding or adjacent residential uses as will safeguard the residential character of the adjoining property. In lieu of trees and shrubs, the commission may approve an ornamental or other fence. Said commission may waive the requirements for all or part of such landscape strip or fence where topography, permanent natural features, public lands, or lack of industrial development on adjacent properties accomplishes the purpose of separation and screening of commercial district from residential district. Failure of maintaining such a strip where required shall constitute violation of the provision of these regulations. So in looking at what you have, you mentioned trees, so what are the height of the trees on that side of the property?
These are always mature in there, 30, 40 feet tall.
Okay, and would you say that is not 25 feet, but estimate 5 feet, 10 feet, what would you say that buffer is that?
I'm gonna say, yeah, I don't believe it's 25 feet, but it would be amazing to have 30 feet.
And you indicated that the property's relatively flat, so there's not like there's a berm or a hill that's blocking from the other side. So on the other side, you mentioned there's a lawn, so is there no fence or property line delineation?
Not as such, there's a tree area set up in here, there used to be a driveway that went through here, and we are proposing to only see that.
So it'd be seeded but not planted with any kind of...
We, yeah, we didn't have a proposal for any traditional trees as such.
And what would you estimate is the, of the, towards the roadway, the trees above, yes, what is the distance of that, is that approximately 25 feet or more?
This, yeah, this would be 25.
Okay.
I mean, this is an existing commercial site, I'm really not changing anything.
But we still have to review it, so just want to make sure the board has that item in mind as well as staff recommended. Are there any comments or questions from board members on the application?
Again, this is, what type of trees are they?
I want to say that they're hemlock trees.
That's on this side, but what about on the other side?
This side is, just make sure this is the tree, please.
Thank you. So the reason why I brought this up is because it is a part of the property, the hemlocks are very mature and all the bottom rates have died off, so there's clear lines of sight through the trees. So it's up to the commission if they feel that, this is an existing commercial, so it always has been, it's up to the commission if they think that now's the time to make improvements and add some vegetation or some screening. I wouldn't recommend vegetation because the hemlocks make it a ground acid, also they would be shielded, the top rates would be shielded, it can be sort of vegetation you were planting there, so I'd say probably a fence of some sort if the commission chooses.
Okay, so any items of discussion on that? So we can leave it as is, could make an additional requirement? Who is the board thinking?
Do you recommend trees, better trees, hemlocks?
No, if the commission decides that, if the commission thinks that this should be upgraded because they are improving the property, making the building larger, I would recommend some, maybe a wooden stockade fence.
On both sides of the park or just that side where the hemlocks aren't bare?
The side with the hemlocks is the side that's most affected. There is a decent buffer from where the parking gets over to the other house. So I'm not as concerned about that side.
It's really just one side of the property where the buffer is maybe not as substantial?
Yeah.
And it looks like, so if I can ask a question?
Yes.
You have, that's new, right, the dark, that's gonna be a new addition to the building?
This is a new addition, the existing building is...
Yeah, it was kind of this odd L or P shaped. It does look like there were trees blocking what used to be the old part of the building in the front and the back, so it's this new section really that's uncovered by any kind of screening. That's what you're saying?
Return to this side here?
Yeah, yep.
Yeah.
So, I don't know, the P and Z required that last time they came forward, but it would seem that we just would be screening around this new part.
Right.
Will there be a public hearing?
No, this is a site plan approval, yep, so there's no public hearing for site plan.
Okay, we can't hear from the affected neighbors?
Right. And if there were issues with dust or noise or illumination, they could of course contact Ryan to review, and then that would have to be resolved. But the goal with the screening is to avoid some of those issues.
I'm not anticipating any, any sort of dust here. They are going to be putting down asphalt buildings, which is fairly dusty, in addition, there's not going to be a constant traffic getting out, he's going to store his equipment there and then remove it and take it to the site.
Can I make a motion?
Sure.
I'll make the motion to approve the screening.
Have to specify whether it would be a fence?
Oh, okay.
So Ryan had suggested a wooden stockade on the hemlock side, if you were suggesting on the other side where the building is being put up to screen from the other property, about how many feet would you say that is?
Oh, in here?
Yep.
So 60 foot?
And that side, and then the row of hemlocks that are barren, would that be 100 feet?
Yeah.
Approximately?
So in here, so 100.
Right, yeah, that's fine with them, I mean, it's... And you said the driveway is gonna be removed, planted?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it's kind of overgrown as it is now, because it has been used a small amount of years.
And we all agree that the vegetative buffer in the upper left-hand corner is adequate, so that would not be necessary on that side? All right, so if you make that motion to include the stockade fencing on the areas indicated unmapped during the review, and then also that the MyLAR must be recorded prior to receiving the zoning permit?
Okay. I make the motion to approve 23-3 SPL site plan approval for construction of an 1,800 square foot addition and 500 square footage area, with the condition that their stockade fencing applied to, I don't know what side that would be.
The two sides discussed.
East and west, thank you both, and the MyLARS being recorded.
Okay, we have a motion by Lindsey.
Second.
Second by June, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? Application is approved with those conditions, thank you. Moving on to item F, discussion and possible action on zoning exemption pursuant to Connecticut general statute 8-2. So since we last met, the Board of Selectmen has scheduled a town meeting vote on the exemption of town property from zoning regulations, so that meeting is scheduled for May 30th, 7 o'clock PM. It's a town meeting vote, so it is of residents present to vote at the town meeting, 7 o'clock here at the auditorium. o'clock here at the auditorium. As the elected officials in regards to zoning, I wanted to make sure you all knew about that town meeting. And then I also thought it would be prudent of this motion to offer the public an opportunity to have a public forum, so that they could understand exactly what we do as the elected officials, how an exemption would impact their property rights, and then just to make sure that everyone is informed about the meeting and their right to vote. So if the commission is so inclined to do so, I did draft a motion. So if you feel that this is something that we should do, I motion that the Town of Plainfield Planning and Zoning Commission hold a public forum for the purpose of allowing the public to speak regarding the town's proposal to, pursuant to CGS eight dash two E, exempting municipal property from having to comply with zoning. Said public forum to be held in the Town Hall Auditorium beginning at seven o'clock PM on Thursday, May twenty-fifth, and that notice of the public forum be published in the turnpike fire to inform the public of that meeting, as well as posted on the Town of Plainfield Facebook page and municipal calendar. Do you have any items for discussion on this topic? If you are so moved, you are.
Make motion, go ahead with that.
Okay, I, I have a motion from Frank to, as read. Okay, and I have a second by Lindsay. All right, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? The staff to make sure that all of those items are followed up on. Thank you. Thank you very much, everybody. All right, moving on to new business. Because of the removal of a member, she was the secretary, so we do have an opening for secretary. Now thankfully, this is not a recording secretary, because Katie accessed that for us, so thank you so much. But the role of secretary would be an executive officer, so in the event that both John and I were absent at the same meeting, which rarely happens, but when it does, the secretary would be the one who would become the chairman of that meeting. So is there anyone who would like to be secretary of the?
I'll do it.
All right, and you do have previous experience as a chairman, so I will open the floor to nominations for secretary.
I'll nominate June for secretary.
Okay, we have June in nomination. Are there any other nominations?
No.
Hearing and seeing no other, Frank made a motion to close nomination. All in favor of closing the nomination? Aye, any opposed? Okay, now we'll entertain the motion to appoint June as secretary.
Make a motion to appoint.
All right, so I have the motion by John, I have the second by Frank, all in favor of June for secretary, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? Welcome to the executive team.
Congratulations.
All right, so item B under new business was a carryover, so that's gonna be struck as an error on the gen. So moving on to item C, twenty-three dash four SPL of Ernest Colletlo Jr. and Three Forty Prospect LLC, requesting site plan review for the construction of gas station, convenience store, drive-through, fast food restaurant, and car wash on properties located at three three eight and three forty dash three forty-two Prospect Street and fourteen Squaw Rock, assessors map twenty-two, block eighty-eight A, lots four, five, and twenty-four, C two, zoning district.
I don't know if you want to say anything, but.
Okay, so it's waiting for wetlands?
Yes.
DOT wetlands, okay. All right, so I'll entertain a motion to continue to the next month.
I'll make that motion to continue to the next month.
Motion by June. Second by John, all in favor. Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? Applications continue to next month. Item D, twenty-three dash five SPL of VMV Motorworks LLC, requesting site plan approval to expand an existing building, parking, and construct associated drainage on property located at one forty-two Norwich Road, assessors map fifteen, block seventy-two, lot three, Commercial two, zoning district.
Yeah, might as well introduce you to the project. We have a few things to get through. For the record, Paul Ford, you're a piece of service associates. We, we still, we have an application in with the ZDA, the site, setting approval, because this is an expansion to a five-month repair facility, so we're kind of waiting for that, that's kind of the first of our candidates. We also got the application in with the Wetlands Commission, and we've got it until later, so I thought I'd take this opportunity to just go over slightly what were planned, so that if you have any thoughts or questions, so. Let's start on that. So VMV Motorworks, located on twelve Norwich Road. It's, currently it's a five-month repair shop. People who've been in town for a long time, like, I don't know if you remember, it was a VW repair shop, sales and repair shop for the longest time. It's a small, small building, it was a very small property, and we recently purchased an efficient to the back to make it a one-acre building. So we expanded the property and we'd like to stay on the building, like, once the addition is on, that will be removed in there. So it'll, it'll pretty much add, I don't know, a hundred and fifty percent of the size of the existing building, so that it has more room to work on its cars, businesses growing, moving, twenty years ago. Proposing some additional parking spaces, because of the size of the lot, we had to get variance for setbacks, which we did that, and it was probably less here than now. So we can get closer to the, more of the boundary line of the building, which would allow more space on the south side to access the rear of the building with the driveway. And again, with the lot so small, it's, an agreement with a neighbor to acquire easement, to use a small strip of land in here for, for parking, and to allow this driveway to get into the back. So he's proposing some parking spaces along the south line in here. Because as it is now, it's time where he's parking, but it's off onto the grass, and I mean, he's just, he doesn't have room, so he's just, to get this way. And then drainage will be addressed, we have a retention area in the back.
And that's still pending, Ellen's ready?
Yeah, that's, I don't think I'm ready for you, so.
So that could be.
That could be my.
Sure. All right, so since we do have some items to wait for, before we can take an action on this, I'll entertain a motion to continue to our, and actually, I was gonna say, the wetlands can't act until June twentieth, is that right?
They're gonna receive it the first time next week.
Okay. So should we just continue to our July meeting?
We can do that unless you would like potential presentation next month if there are some issues.
So the variance will be resolved by then? You said you had to go before ZDA?
Yes, that should be.
Because the variance will impact parking and screening, right?
He already has the variance, this is just a site, this can see it, but the site.
This will be a location approval to expand the old road.
Gotcha, okay.
So the only thing outstanding within the, well. Yes, I expect ZDA to act the first, or the first week next month.
But then wetlands can't act until the twentieth. So we can continue to our next regular scheduled meeting, and if you have any updates to, because it's ended that time. Otherwise, we're pretty much gonna auto, at the next meeting, auto-continue to July, because we wouldn't have wetlands. Which means we couldn't have final drainage. Possibly. Yeah, exactly.
But you would have engineer reports, right? If there was anything that you could address, show what you know.
So I will entertain a motion to continue to our next meeting in June.
Make a motion to continue in June.
All right, motion by Frank. Second by John, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? All right, continues to our next regularly scheduled meeting. Twenty-three dash one, ZC of P Camp Realty LLC, requesting a zone change from C one Commercial to Highway Commercial on property located at zero Norwich Road, assessors map ten, block thirteen, B lot five, and that's application has been withdrawn. Item F, twenty-three dash seven SPL of Daniel Sylvia, requesting a special permit to create an accessory dwelling unit on property located at twenty-nine Norwich Drive, assessors map thirteen, block eighty, lot forty-seven, RA thirty, zoning district. Because this is a special permit, it does require a public hearing. So I'll entertain a motion to schedule that.
I will make that motion, schedule a public hearing next month.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Scheduled to public hearing. Item G, twenty-three dash eight SP of Town of Plainfield, requesting special permit to add a freestanding cover over signage at Vepsin's Park in Musa, on property located at thirty-five Turk Street, Musa, assessors map two M, block ninety-nine, lot eight, RA nineteen, zoning district, and as this is also a special permit, it does require public hearing.
Make a motion, I'm expecting a public hearing.
I think Lindsay beat you too, so. Motion by John and a second by Lindsay to schedule a public hearing for our next meeting, all in favor? Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, scheduled to our next meeting. Review and act on the minutes of the April eleventh, so it occurred to me there was a page missing from the April minutes. Yeah, so I would like to continue this to the next meeting, just so we can get that missing page and, and make sure that we're all set with that. So if I could have that motion. All right, motion by John to continue the minutes to the next meeting to resolve the missing page issue. Second by June, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? All right, continue to next. Correspondents?
We have one. Nine fifty-four Norwich Road has a cell tower on property maintained by ATNT, and they are proposing to install some rear fence, so we're just being notified.
Our report from zoning enforcement.
Fourteen Canterbury Road, junk vehicles and equipment, hoping that it is cleaned up, but I have not yet made it out there to check. Thirty-two forty-four Norwich Road, old Jewish savings, we are still working with the courts and the RV in progress over there. Thirteen Simmer's Ave, motor vehicle junkyard, that cleaned up again yesterday for cleanup, and I think they may have finished today, but I was stuck in the office and getting a look down there. Two fifty-six Pauling Road, RV is welding, commercial tractor-trailer boxes, a job site trailer on the property, this is also before the court, so we are close to concluding this, though. Five fifty-two Squaw Rock Road for junkyard, I have to go out to make an inspection and we have to continue the minutes with the court. Zero Community Gap, mulch operation, I have some new reports on this. One oh four High Street for a junkyard, the property owner was looking to begin cleaning up the property once the backyard dried out, I have to check on that progress. Two oh one Pickup Road sheds in a setback of dump trucks in the property, I have to check on that, they were supposed to be in compliance. Think about a week ago, starting to check and see if they are compliant. Nine Lakes Street for a trailer, possibly as a dwelling, we've been playing phone tag, gone back and forth probably five times now. Black Hill Road for a tractor-trailer property, they're putting the house on the market, so we're just letting this ride, we'll let you see how it plays out. Seven eighty-seven Squaw Rock, unpermitted apartment, this was a dog kennel that new owners turned into an apartment, it wasn't up to building code, not in compliance with zoning regulations. They have applied for a building permit, a zoning permit to convert it to, to storage, to make it just a shed, so once that's completed, we'll be off.
So a report in, from planning and development, there was nothing new outside the regularly submitted report. So under other, we have the discussion and possible action on statutory training requirements. So as members of the board, the state requires that we receive a certain number of hours over a period of time. There may be an opportunity through the Connecticut Bar Association to have a free training offered in Plainfield, it'll be open to all boards and commissions, not just our board. The topic could likely be FOI or Robert's Rules of Order, or Heather Remington, that kind of thing. So if, if the board finds that amenable, then I can move forward with working with the Connecticut Bar and staff to get that scheduled, maybe in June. I think it would be an hour or two, so it would cover two hours of training.
Sounds like a good idea to me.
Okay, so I will allow you forward with scheduling that with staff and inviting all other boards and commissions once we have that time and dates set. Awesome, thank you. All right, seeing no other business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn by June and a second by John, all in favor? Aye, any opposed? Meeting is adjourned, thank you, everybody.